Ladies and gentlemen, as the colors come down the aisle, I'd like you to give a big round of applause to the veterans. You know, at this time of the year, it's very often we forget about our veterans and those who are serving in our armed forces, both here and abroad, in harm's way. They dedicate themselves so that we're safe and that we're able to meet at particular times during the year. They miss their ceremonies, they miss their families, they miss happy occasions to protect us. It's important that at this time of the year and throughout the year, that we remember our veterans and want to thank the veterans and those who serve in the armed forces for their commitment to our country and to preserve our freedom. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the chiefs of the volunteer fight department to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Chief Joe Miller and Chief Hadrick Redd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chiefs remain standing. I ask Tom Larson to come forward singing of our national anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose rough stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, they proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I'd like to ask Rabbi Waxlock, Young Israel, go forward for the invocation.
Rav Bono Shalom, Master of the Universe, great blessing to all who have gathered here today to witness the induction of the Honorable Scott J. Mandel, the Honorable Hume Diamond, and the Honorable John Bendo as members of the City Council of the City of Long Beach. We pray that as these distinguished men and women begin their service, that you grant them wisdom, insight, judgment, and compassion to carry out their duties and to cherish the sanctity of the public trust which they are sworn to uphold. These individuals are dedicated public servants who give of themselves to enhance and better the lives of all citizens of our city. Let us take a moment to reflect upon the catastrophic events of Hurricane Sandy that brought such disaster and devastation upon our city and how we continue to recover in a manner that will render us stronger and better. This effort should serve as a model as to what we can achieve if we work cooperatively in a focused and sustained manner, continue to give us strength to unite and become a stronger, more resolute nation dedicated to the principles of democracy and freedom. Allow us to enter this next year with a spirit of justice, friendship, community, and love of all mankind. Grant us peace, prosperity, and success in all of our endeavors, and let us say amen.
Please be seated. Welcome to the 20,008, 18 City Council induction. We come here today some five years and change after Hurricane/Superstorm Sandy has devastated and left our city in the worst condition that anyone can remember. At that time, the city administration moved forward in an effort to recover and then to rebuild our city. The City Council worked hand in hand with the city manager to make sure that our residents received every form of help that they could. In our audience today, we have who is now our former city manager and our new Nassau County Controller, Jack Schneierman. We would be remiss if we didn't thank Jack for all of his hard work during his six years serving the city of Long Beach and its residents. Thank you, Jack. At that time, the City Council had a yeoman's job to bring the city back from the brink of destruction. You're going to see today and hear from one of the members of that City Council, Scott J. Mandel, who is the last serving member of that City Council and who has seen the city from the worst to the point that we have reached today, and their work is not done. He will be joined with incoming Councilman John Bendo, returning Councilwoman Hume Diamond, City Councilmember Anthony Aramo, and City Councilwoman Anissa Moore, moving our city forward. I thought about today and all of the events that were taking place throughout the county. Twenty-five years ago, 1992, was declared the Year of the Woman. Forty-seven women, one House seat in common. Four women, one seat to the U.S. Senate. United States Senator Barbara Mikulski of Maryland said, "1992, the Year of the Woman? This is not a fad or a year." And that struck me today because twenty-five years later, at the start of 2018, Nassau County today just sworn in its first female county executive, Laura Carrick. This morning, Town of Hempstead Supervisor Laura Gillen was sworn in. She's the first Democrat to be elected in the town of Hempstead in a hundred years and the second woman to hold that position. She was molested along with the Town of Hempstead Clerk Sylvia Cabana. And we also have been sworn in later this week the supervisor of the town of North Hempstead, Judy Bosworth. We have sitting behind me, our representative to Congress, the Honorable Kathleen Rice. Who I might add is my favorite Congresswoman. And today, we induct two members... Excuse me, we induct a female member of the City Council, Hume Diamond, to sit alongside Anissa Moore, and for the first time in almost forty years, two women will be serving on this City Council for the first time. So maybe, just maybe, Senator Mikulski was right. It's not a fad, it wasn't a year. It's an ongoing story. And today, we gather as a community to witness the swearing-in of our new City Council. It's an honor for me at this time to introduce the Honorable Fran Adelson, the former City Council President, to induct City Councilmember Scott Mandel.
For all thanks, I salute you to everybody. It is truly an honor for me to be swearing in Scott Mandel for his third term for the Long Beach City Council. He's my man, so that's where I'm going to speak from on this. Having served on the council with Scott, I know first and foremost how much Scott really cares about this city. I know his sincerity, his diligence, and his commitment to all of us. He really understands the meaning of humor. You know, he's caring, he's kind, he's thoughtful, and he really has a great sense of humor. I know that not everybody who speaks has a really good sense of humor. He loves his family, and you can really tell how much he loves his family by the way that he speaks about his family when he speaks about them. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to tell you a little bit about Scott for some of you who may not know about Scott, may not be familiar with his work, what he's done for a living, and what he's done on the City Council. So first, I'm going to tell you that Scott is a graduate of Oxford University and Hofstra Law School. He was a judicial law clerk for the Superior Court of New Jersey. He's been a commercial... He has been in private practice as a commercial litigation attorney, and he was used currently the principal law clerk for New York State's Supreme Court Justice. He served as a volunteer member on the Long Beach Auxiliary Police. He's a member of the Long Beach Lawyers Association, and he's a member of the Lions Club. I'd also like to tell you about some of the things that Scott has brought to the city and has voted on, and how much he cares about the city by things that he's done for the past six years. He's been on the council for six years. So, he's worked to stabilize the fiscal integrity of Long Beach. He's advocated for federal and state financing following the devastation of Superstorm Sandy. As City Council President, he helped steer the fight to cut red tape delays for FEMA assistance. He led the City Council during this early rebuilding and hardening of the city's infrastructure, water and sewer plants, parks, recreation facilities, and a beautiful boardwalk, voted for the Orange Power Engineers Project. Environmentally, he spoke out and opposed LNG, and he also advocated for our current plastic dab ban. Also, he was involved in lowering the speed limits to help make our streets safer. So, I mean, there's so many more things, but a lot of times people forget, in the heat of elections and the media war goes on in their lives, what people on the council really do accomplish. So I just wanted to tell you those things about Scott. And I just want to close by saying, there's always work to be done. Long Beach is really, you know, we're going into the future, and there's so much more work, there's so much work that was done, much more work that has to be done. I look forward to Scott's tireless advocacy along with the rest of the City Council. Congratulations to Hume and to John in continuing to make Long Beach safe and sustainable for all of us. Thank you. I'm sorry, Scott, I forgot I swam. Okay, raise your hand. I, Scott, am the resident residing at the City of Long Beach, January 25th, 2018, State of New York. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The charter and charter ordinances of the City of Long Beach. And that I will faithfully discharge the charges and duties of the Office of Long Beach City Council, according to my best ability.
Hi, good afternoon. Happy New Year. Well, thank you all for being here today and joining us today as we start our new administration. First, of course again, I really want to thank my dear wife, Karen, and my beautiful daughter, Ashley, and my mom, Libby Mandel, who's here with us today. My sister, Stacy, my brothers, Zach and Jordan, my niece, Sierra, the rest of my family and friends for their unwavering support. I also want to thank the Nassau County Democratic Chairman, J. Jacobs, the Nassau County Democrats, the Honorable Darlene Tagney, the Honorable Stephen Kohat, thank you for emceeing today, former City Councilwoman Fran Adelson, thank you for those kind words, John Mooney, Norman Wilson, whose birthday it is today, he's here, and the members of the Long Beach CSCA, and the rest of my supporters. And of course, I want to congratulate my fellow councilmembers, Hume Diamond and John Bendo, who coiled the work with you as well, with Councilman Anthony Aramo and Councilwoman Anissa Moore. When I was first elected to the City Council in 2012, our city was a much different place than it is today, both physically and financially. I'm proud that during my two terms in office, together as a city, we've accomplished many great achievements that have helped to move this city forward and made it a shining example of growth, resiliency, and leadership. Together, we brought the city back from the brink of bankruptcy. We have reestablished our financial credibility and, in partnership with our uncredibly dedicated unions, taken negotiated steps to right-size our workforce to help responsibly balance our budgets with outstanding services. We have recommitted Long Beach to the goal of environmental stability through the implementation of programs like single-stream recycling, fighting against harmful fracking projects, and by working with all levels of government to help ensure the protection of our bay and coastal waters. It's been an honor to serve as the City Council President during one of the city's most challenging times as we rebuilt after the destruction caused by Superstorm Sandy. Together, we made history, and I'm extremely proud to have been a part of that history. For example, we decided to take down, redesign, and rebuild our boardwalk, which boardwalk not only serves as a wonderful, one-of-a-kind destination spot in the entire state of New York, but more importantly, serves as a fiscal symbol and a reminder of what a united Long Beach working together can do to ensure stability for our future generations. As I start my third term in office, I'm extremely excited to continue that work that we started in 2012 and to work with my fellow councilmembers again, Councilman Anthony Aramo, Councilwoman Hume Diamond, Councilwoman Anissa Moore, and Councilman John Bendo, to continue to make the important decisions that are in the best interest of our city and move Long Beach forward. Thank you.
As 2017 ended and 2018 began, we had a dusting of snow. And out on the streets to make sure the residents of the city were safe was our labor force. Very often, there were city workers who'd go out in the cold, the snow, the rain, the heat, to clean our streets, pick up the sanitation, to fix the water main breaks, to make sure our sewers are working, are often overlooked. And we would be remiss if we didn't thank our city workers led by President John Mooney and his board who are sitting here today and thank them for all of the hard work they do. I'd also like to thank, on behalf of the city, the city administration, and the city residents, the Long Beach Police Department, the Long Beach Fire Department, and the volunteers who come out day and night to protect our city. Thank you very much. Without these workers, our city wouldn't be what it is today. As Councilman Mandel alluded to, we're not finished yet. We have a long way to go. And it's the City Council that will lead our city into the future, making sure, as we've come to understand, that our city becomes stronger, smarter, and safe. It gives me great pleasure to introduce my favorite Congresswoman, Kathleen Rice, to induct Hume Diamond.
It's a pleasure for me to be here. I know everyone in Long Beach knows that for the last thirteen years I've sat right here in Nassau County's Long Beach. Just don't tell my family because they don't want to leave our city. However, if I could, I would. When Hume called me and asked me to swear her, and I immediately said yes. There is... It's a great honor to be here, inducting someone in to... for you to continue your role in public service. You can read all about what Hume has done in her career in this little booklet. But since graduating from law school, she has worked exclusively in public service, fighting for those who either don't have a voice, don't have power, and need an advocate, because she has always been there for them. And so, we are lucky to have her willing again to run and to serve on the City Council. And let me tell you, after the last three years that I've spent in Washington, Harry Truman once said, "To run crime, politics get a dog." I don't know, true, I already have a dog. But I would say that after spending three years in Washington, it is increasingly more difficult in these incredibly partisan times to be friends with people, forget about the opposite party, but even a known party. And I can tell you that in the, I don't know, ten years or so since I've known Hume, she has been an incredibly loyal and committed friend. And that is what makes her such a great public servant in addition to her great faith, which I know she is a woman of great faith. So it's my honor to call Hume Diamond up, so I administer the oath. I, State Attorney.
I, Hume Diamond.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach.
Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the Office of City Council Member
Of the Office of City Council Member
according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
First, I'd like to thank Congresswoman Kathleen Rice for joining me for this very special day. Since your election to Nassau County District Attorney, when we met on some very cold, strange platforms, and then you're being elected to Congress, you have been a mentor of mine. I want to thank you for your leadership on so many issues that our community holds dear, such as women's empowerment, like the promotion of women in businesses, and storm recovery and preparedness on the South Shore after Hurricane Sandy. I would like to give a special thank you to you for your advocacy on behalf of the State of Israel and in opposition to the voice of abdugment and sanctions movement. At a time when anti-Cuban and anti-Israel sentiment is on the rise, your clear and continued voice of support of Israel is unmatched. And for that, on behalf of so many in the community, I thank you. As many of you know, in February 2017, I was appointed by Councilmembers Scott Mandel, Anissa Moore, and Vice President Anthony Aramo to serve as a member of the City Council. While being appointed and now an elected official was not something I considered long before the opportunity was in front of me, it has been a blessed experience. Along with the members of the City Council, we have worked together to make our community more resilient to extreme storms. And most importantly, we've made a more inclusive community as we embrace the diversity that we hold dear. Together, we made history when we approved an unprecedented eight-year collective bargaining agreement between the CSCA and the city. Let's give a round of applause for our It is an honor now to serve the community as an elected member of this esteemed body. Thank you to all of the voters for their support and for putting their confidence in me on Election Day. You have my word that I will continue to work for you and ensure that the things we hold dear are our priority. To those who have not yet given me their support, I look forward to working to earn that support in my next term. As Paul DeMayr once said, "I never did anything alone. Whatever I accomplished, I accomplished collectively." We all care about our community, and I am confident that together we can continue to make Long Beach stronger. The years ahead are filled with many challenges, whether it be ensuring fiscal health at a time when the cost of running a municipality of this size continues to increase each year, finding new and innovative ways to protect our community against ever increasingly powerful storms, and battling the evil hatred, racism, and bias that work to divide us instead of making us closer. Together as a community, we can overcome each of these challenges. In the weeks and months ahead, we will continue to look for ways to coordinate with our private sector partners and other municipalities to increase and improve services while streamlining costs. We will continue the process of sewer consolidation, which will return our beloved Reynolds Channel to a state clean waterway. I want to thank my friend and our state senator, Todd Comiskey, for advocating securing the funding for this groundbreaking project. I am proud to announce that in the next few months, in conjunction with the Town of Hempstead, we will begin the construction of the long-awaited dock off the back of the West End Firehouse, which will allow both police and fire rescue times to decrease. I want to thank the Town of Hempstead and Chief Joe Miller for their partnership and cooperation on this project. We will continue the accelerated road repair and see the long-awaited start of the critical infrastructure project that will alleviate the flooding in the lower park area. Before I conclude, there are several individuals with whom this would not have been possible. First, I want to thank Councilmembers Mandel and Moore and Vice President Aramo for selecting me to serve on the council for the last eleven months and for your leadership and support during that time, along with our new Nassau County Controller, Jack Schneierman. You have each led the city with honesty and integrity, and it has been an honor to serve our community alongside you. Good luck, Jack, as you begin your term as Nassau County Controller. I want to thank State Senator Todd Comiskey, as well as Chairman J. Jacobs, for their continued friendship and guidance. I also want to thank the Long Beach Democratic Committee and its leadership. While there are too many to name individually, I want to thank each and every person for their support, including Mr. James Hodge, who among other things prepared me for my first Facebook Live video, and for Chief Gillespie for the weekly beach tours. A special thank you to the CSCA under the leadership of President John Mooney and his executive board, Norman Wilson, Sean executive board Norman Wilson, Sean O'Neil, and Maureen Walsh for the unstoppable atrium. And last, but certainly not least, I must thank my parents, Rabbi Howard Fran David, who continue to support me on every road I take, regardless of how bumpy it might be. Thank you to my siblings, including my five sisters, who came from as far as Jerusalem to campaign with me during this election. I could not have done this without you. As we begin 2018 and look forward to what lies in store, I want to wish everyone a very happy, healthy, and peaceful new year. God bless the city of Long Beach and God bless America. Thank you very much.
I'd like to his knowledge and presence of our legislator Denise Ford, who is sitting in the audience. Denise represents us on the county legislature, and I'm sure she'll be working with Mr. Schneier to make sure that we got lots of money down here. That we're well taken care of, right, Jack? There are a lot of firsts about the city of Long Beach that have taken place over the last few years. And one of the first that I suppose I'm probably the most proud of is, for the first time in the history of the city of Long Beach, we have a Democratic state senator. Now, we've had state senators from Long Beach. His name was Reynolds. That's why it's called Reynolds Channel. Senator Reynolds, who was responsible for the creation of the city of Long Beach and the ability to get the charter, made Long Beach a city. He also wound up in jail. But today, we're represented by a young man, to me, a young man, who was born and raised in Long Beach, whose grandparents were deeply involved in our city in any number of ways, passed on to his parents, and now passed on to our state senator Todd Kaminski. I'm going to ask Todd to come up and for the introduction of our new council member, John Bendo.
Good afternoon, everybody. Congratulations to my friend Hume and Scott. Congratulations to Jack Schneier. Jack is your first elected physician. People can either love you or fear you, but once you audit them, you've made that choice for them. To my fellow Long Beachers, good afternoon. Happy New Year. It's a great day to be here. Some communities hold their polar bear plunge on New Year's Day. I'm grateful, Long Beachers, and not one of them, and look forward to seeing you in February. I have the privilege of swearing to John Bendo today, and I think a lot of the, a lot of what we saw took place in November is something that John fits right into. To be successful in politics on Long Island, as proud as I am to be a member of my party, you have to appeal to both sides, because frankly, voters in Nassau don't care so much about your party. They want honest people who are going to stand up and do the right thing. And both Laura Curran and Laura Gillen, Jack obviously had a benefit from getting a lot of votes from both sides. And on Election Night, there was one person who really stood out in Long Beach and got votes from everyone, basically blew everybody away, and that's John Bendo. John comes from the finest tradition of public service in Long Beach. I was proud to have grown up around it, and it's very smart and successful people deciding what they want to give to their community because they love it. What do you need to know about John? Well, he's a nuclear scientist who decided that he wanted to get more involved in Long Beach than he already was, which was very difficult, and lent his brain and his honesty and his time to make our great city get even better. So we're very lucky to have John Bendo. Although he's not with us today, John has made Harvey Reasonberg very proud. I know they share the same hairstyles. But John is exactly what it's about, which is doing the right thing regardless of who cares or who's looking or who it may please, and I really look forward to seeing what he's going to do from that seat right behind me. So ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome John Bendo to be sworn in.
I state your name.
I, John Bendo.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Council Member.
Of City Council Member.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you all for coming, to my family, to my friends, and I guess I get to say this for the first time, thank you to my fellow council members. With all my years of attending and speaking at city council meetings, I've become the master of three-minute remarks. And for those of you who attend council meetings, you know what that means, we're limited to three minutes. Now, for the first time, when I'm not limited to three-minute remarks, I find all habits still prevail, so I'll keep it short, though I hope you indulge me if I'll go over just a bit, just because I can. I'm both humbled and honored to have been elected to the City Council. I have so many people to thank for helping me get here. First, my wonderful wife Linda, for her unwavering support. I want to thank the Democratic Party for giving me the opportunity to run. I would also like to thank all those that attended my fundraisers and contributed. And I also believe we owe a debt of gratitude to all the candidates that ran. Showing love of community through running for office is a noble aspiration that should be applauded. It is what makes our system of government, messy as and frustrating as it can be at times, the beacon on the hill. But I never, never could have gotten where I'm standing right now without the amazing group of people we assembled, who I'm proud to say are sitting in this room right now. We were a ragtag group. Most of us had no experience of running a campaign. We were flying by the seat of our pants, often making it up as we go. We were always trying to be creative and thinking outside the box, and always trying to make it about people, not politics. We were Democrats, Republicans, and Independents, all working together towards a common goal. And isn't that what politics really should be about? Coming together to be greater than the sum of our individual ambitions? Our constitution begins with the words, "We the people." And we're all familiar with Abraham Lincoln's words referring to government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Or perhaps, you may not know President Eisenhower's less famous known words, "That politics ought to be the part-time profession of every citizen, who would protect the rights and privileges of the people, who would preserve what is good and fruitful in our national heritage." All great words that reinforce that government is derived from the people, and that it's government that should work for the betterment of people. Political campaigns can get petty and silly, and this one did not disappoint. We know there's interesting politics in Long Beach. President Ronald Reagan probably summed it up best when he said, "Politics is supposed to be the second oldest profession." But I have come to realize that it bears a very close resemblance to the first. But elections also create opportunities. An opportunity to hit the reset button if need be. An opportunity to learn from what we did before and do it better tomorrow. An opportunity to bring people together around common goals. An opportunity to create a common vision for our city. An opportunity to try new and innovative approaches. And an opportunity to come together to create our own future. But to recognize opportunity, we must be open to all points of view. We can decide to seize the opportunities, or we can simply squander them, pettiness, old grudges, and dwelling on previous mistakes. So where do we go from here? Do we women mimic what Congresswoman Rice talked about in Washington, where compromise has become a bad word? Do we jockey for position? Do we try to ensure someone with a different point of view doesn't get their way? Or can we say that Long Beach deserves better? Whether you're a Democrat, a Republican, an Independent, or whatever your affiliation may be, the one thing we all have in common is a love of our community. This place we all have chosen to call our home. And if we love our community and want it to be the best it can be, shouldn't we be able to use that as a rallying cry to come together and work collaboratively? Not long ago, after Hurricane Harvey hit Texas, many of us worked at St. Mary's Church gathering and packing supplies. There was no politics, no grudges, no animosity. We all worked side by side, even people sitting here now that didn't want me to win. But we had a common purpose, helping the people of Texas. And we had this spirit also after Superstorm Sandy. We will win. A community of people that put aside our differences, came together because working together benefited us all. We can still have that. We can come together and rally around our love of Long Beach. This city and this council are going to have some tough decisions to make going forward. But if we all hunker down in our political silos, if we make it about control and shutting out those who we may not agree with, and make governing a contest of egos or a domain of special interests, it's only the city that suffers. But if we can all remember that one common goal we have, the betterment of our community, we should be able to set aside our differences and work together, regardless of which political group you may be affiliated with. I stand here now saying I am willing to focus on the greater good. I am ready to make the focus about Long Beach. The question is, who will join me? And the question is for every person sitting in this room and every person that resides in this city. Can we get past the grudges? Can we compromise for the greater good? I stand ready to do so. Can you? In conclusion, for those that did not vote for me, I want you to know I will strive to earn your confidence. For those that did vote for me, I promise to work hard every day to ensure your vote for me is justified. Again, thank you for giving me this honor and putting your trust in me. I look forward to working with all of you for the betterment of our community. Thank you. I'd like to call on Reverend Brian Barr from St. Mary's of the Isle Church for the benediction.
And again, let us pray. During the Civil War, I guess this was a particularly dark period during the war, President Lincoln gathered his cabinet, just regrouped, and confront the situation. And proudly, one of his cabinet members said, just sort of out loud said, "Sometimes you begin to wonder if God is on our side." And Lincoln's response was, "My concern is that whether God is on our side, my greater concern is that we're on God's side, because God is always right." I'll leave it to Lincoln to say it right. Today, on this day of new beginnings and clean slates, we ask you, Lord, to bless those who do God's work, especially those in the trenches, especially those who protect us, who keep our police and fire and emergency personnel safe, and these days warm. We pray for all the people of this great city. Bless them in this new year of health and hope and freedom. And in a particular way today, bless our new leaders and representatives. Bless them with wisdom and humility, and encourage us needed to serve with integrity. Bless them today and always. Amen.
Thank you, Father. I'd like to remind everyone to stay for the meeting of the City Council, which will follow the conclusion of the induction ceremony. I'd like to call on Tom Larson to lead us into singing of "God Bless America." Please, right.
God bless America, and that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the tide with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with hope. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you, Tom. Happy New Year, everyone, happy and healthy. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.